Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the order of this meeting on September 23rd, 2021. This is the special meeting and public hearing for the City of Nashua Planning Board. Can we get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson.
Here.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. Alderman David Tenza. Alderman Jane Schmidt, Jan Schmidt. Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Mark Meehan.
Here.
Okay, so we have a quorum. We have no minutes on the agenda. Anything on the communications, Matt? Or anything you want to ask Scott?
Actually, I, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Board. There's two additional memorandums that came in after your packets were mailed. One from Donna Graham, September 11th, 2021, Resolution R21 relative to the approval of the Imagine Nashua 2021 Master Plan. And the second one is also from Donna Graham, September 23rd, 2021, Resolution R21169, authorizing the City of Nash to enter into an agreement and consent to joint use with Liberty Utilities and making a supplemental appropriation of $38,394. This is in the area of Sward Terrace for utility work.
Okay. Anything further?
That's it.
Okay. I don't believe we have any reports of chairman and committee or liaison, so we will move on to the first item on the agenda, which is the public hearing for the Imagine Nashua Master Plan. All right, come on up. Yeah, you can remove a mask when you're at the mic.
Thank you so much. I am honored and thrilled to share with you Imagine Nashua, the master plan and framework for the future of our great city. Over the last year, the Master Plan Steering Committee, city community development and planning staff, and the team from UTIL have met extensively with the citizens of Nashua. Through a series of more than a dozen public, official public meetings, 40 focus group meetings, and in addition to all of the feedback gathered through our interactive website, we present to you a community and citizen master plan to be proud of. We had the blessing and the curse of a global pandemic during this process. Our citizens thought about the future of our city in a different light than they may have only just a few short years ago. This plan is reflective of what we have heard from everyone as a community. We learned what's working well, what we can enhance, and where we want to be for the future. For some citizens, this presents their dreams of what they will leave behind for a generation to come. For other citizens, this is the future that they wish to work for and thrive in. This comprehensive framework not only illustrates ideas and ideals, it also includes the recommendations and details of how we will get there together. The hardest work is now in ensuring that city policies and land use codes are reworked to make this vision a reality. Thank you. Thank you to the thousands of individual community members who thoughtfully engaged in this process. Thank you to the Master Plan Committee, made up of 22 community members, for your care and guidance. Thank you to city staff for your incredible diligence and hard work on ensuring the completion of the master plan is a true reflection of our community. And UTIL, thank you. Your experience, your expertise, and your hard work has made our visions come to life. And with that, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Will from UTIL, who will walk us through the master plan.
Great, thanks. Oh, and just a reminder, just the name and address for record, or your company address when you come up.
My name is Will Cohen. I'm an urban planner at UTIL, who's, which, the firm's address is 115 Kingston Street, Boston, Mass. 02111. As a courtesy to the crew, I have a snively toddler, and pending results of the COVID test, I'm gonna keep my mask on. Okay, so I'm gonna give a fairly brief presentation. I know that the Planning Board has seen much of this document already, so also I'm gonna still continue to present it, because this is a public hearing about the document. I will note changes that have come up since the last Planning Board meeting, just for your reference.
Will, try again.
Okay. So, anyone who has launched the website, and the website for this planning process is imagine.nashuanh.gov. The full draft is available right now on the city, or on the planning website. And the, it's a long document. It's approximately 200 pages. It's grown in about, since about, it's grown about 25 pages since you've seen it last. Most of that is formatting, although we've also completed a lot of the little holes that were still pending. What I am gonna go through, for the purposes of this, for this hearing, is the primary highlights, the biggest pieces that this plan has to bring for the City of Nashua. And so, at the beginning here, right off the bat, the way we framed the most important pieces of this, out of those 200 pages, is what we're calling the top goals. Now, there's a lot of different lenses and frameworks and topic areas that have been discussed over the course of this planning process. And so, part of our task has been to try to wrestle that complicated medley of flavors to the ground, so to speak. And so, we've tried to use colors liberally to help with that process, although we've also worked on accessibility to make sure that this actually works in grayscale, as came up at the last committee meeting. But as you can see here on the document, there are six broad categories or topic areas that everything is distributed to. The big topic areas of this project are centered around land use and development, housing, mobility and transit, economic development, open space and natural resources, and arson culture, which we hope generally reflects the broad topic areas that the point of this plan is to address. So, within that, each of these squares effectively represents a big initiative that this plan envisions the city pushing forward over the short, medium, or long term. And so, the first substantial chunk of this planning document is towards those top goals. So, for the public looking at this document, this is where your attention should be generally focused. To that end, immediately following that is another way to think about the general focus of the plan, which is a spatial version of the same kind of idea. It's not that each one of the specific top goals itself delves into a specific piece of the city, but across all of the top goals, these areas, the ones highlighted in yellow, are generally speaking, the places that the plan sees the most change coming to the city, or where change may be happening and the point of the plan is to control and shape it. Each of these is then gone into as a scenario later in the document. The other big piece, which helps frame what's happening, is there's this idea of a report card, an implementation report card. We've also called it variously over the course of this process, an implementation matrix. So, again, for each of the top goals, or each of the focus areas, you can see here a list of short-ish term metrics over, you know, the next five or so years, five to 10 years, that were they to happen, or were these metrics to be realized, that should generally mean that the city is making progress towards these. The reason why I'm saying that in a kind of roundabout way is, we did wrestle a little bit with some of these big ones. Many of the large redevelopment scenarios, there's a bit of, you see it, or you know it when you see it. If Amherst Street does actually get redeveloped, or zoning gets changed, and projects start to be implemented, we should consider that as success for that major redevelopment scenario. So, it's hard to put an exact number to that, but you can see there is some version of that, that the condition of sidewalks and streets should generally improve over time, things like that. And so, this piece, we filled it out more since the last time you've seen it, but this is actually the primary remaining task. We're still hammering out with the planning department and some other associated city departments. We want to fill this out a little bit further, there's one or two that are missing, and we also need to add a little bit about timeframe, and the parties responsible through city government and associated stakeholders. The other big piece right at the beginning is a document, and this is a page we hope that the public continues to refer to, which is, for the rest of the document, for the next 200 pages, what do all the different pieces mean? A primary goal of this is that the document not just be, you know, a 200-page Word document, so to speak, with a bunch of text that gets printed out and can sit on a shelf, but that it actually be a tool usable not only by city officials, or the public at large, but other groups, be they real estate brokers, current property owners, or potential investors in the City of Nashua, to be able to, at a quick glance, understand what the city's position on redevelopment and these processes are, and to know how to fit into that process. And so, the idea here is, one, that the document be understandable at a glance and easily referred to, but also that these sections could be, you know, pulled out on their own as subsets to help explain what some of these initiatives are going to be. From there, we talk about our engagement process. Amber did allude to it, but it's worth saying that despite the difficulties of the pandemic, and there's a lovely screenshot of Zoom, which is very meta, that there's a picture of a Zoom meeting on a Zoom meeting right now, but, you know, that aside, despite the difficulties of that, we would like to think that we did a remarkably good job at trying to balance all the difficulties of in-person outreach to still achieve a remarkably high amount of interest in this process. For a community of Nashua's size, when there's a lot of other, you know, very salient issues pressing on households right now in the United States, I would say that we had a robust level of engagement that was pretty consistent throughout the planning process. So, we talked about that upfront, because that's an important framing device for any master plan, to actually be supported through a community-led process. And then from there, we go further into not just the metrics, but the actual goals themselves. So, what you're seeing right here is really what shows up for the next, you know, 170 pages or so. But, what we've done since the last time this was presented to you, is we've taken much of the information about the top goals, the redevelopment scenarios, and spent a lot of time, it sounds silly, because I'm saying it's reformatting, but we did spend a lot of time reformatting and actually accenting the work that went into these. I think when it was last presented to you, much of these complicated rendering, site plans, statistics, type, test fits, and there's other kinds of things, were shrunk down pretty small, and I think for the purposes of you all and for everyone else, it just sort of seemed like almost, just sort of filler diagrams and other information to go along with the rest of the text, which actually meant that, in that last draft, we were a little concerned that the point of all of these redevelopment scenarios and strategies was being a little bit lost. And so, for example, here, you know, we started off right at the beginning, the number one top goal, the biggest thing, is the redevelopment opportunities of the city. Right? So, right off the bat, Amherst Street really was the prototypical example that we used of a long-term transformative kind of development, leading into, you know, a street section here that's now much, much bigger, and then a lot of other pieces, ranging from the very small, when, you know, an actual property gets redeveloped along the Amherst Street quarter, what would need to happen? As a building gets rebuilt, its footprint might ideally change, the street section changes, you know, it gets drilled down to into more detail, and then also highlighting in a much more clear way that vision. And the reason why that matters is, these diagrams, this stuff, was the meat of what was being presented during the public process. And so, we hope that these, because they're now, like, big, elaborated on with a lot more detail, full page, you know, and so on, that these can be useful as information to developers, really, as, as these opportunities are coming forward. Because when someone comes and they're talking, and they began preliminary discussions with the planning department, or with other, you know, groups, the planning department and the planning board and all of you should be able to, you know, open up the book, or the PDF, so to speak, and say, no, this, this is the vision. We'd like to see how you can contribute to this, because this is what the master plan is. Amherst Street was one, but there were many other ones that we also feel it's important to remind the planning board and everyone that this process was about, right? We are envisioning that the train station eventually gets built, and that there be a good TOD development centered around that. So, you know, that site plan exists, it was present here. We did a lot of work thinking about how Main Street and other parts of the downtown can be made more multimodal. You know, that was not just a simple rendering, that we actually thought through a fair amount of detail, the different ways that the lanes might need to move, and that public space, you know, the push and pull of sidewalks, and bike lanes, and all the other pieces. This may not be, you know, engineer, this isn't shovel-ready, but this is absolutely good enough as a starting, as a detailed starting point, that when the city starts working on figuring out the next step for Main Street, that that can happen with a lot of public discourse that's already taking place. You can see it in much more detail here. You know, additional site planning work, and then as we went into it, the other big piece was the Daniel Webster College site, right? This was one that was very, very complicated. We originally envisioned at the outset of this, that we were gonna have, you know, three different scenarios, ranging from industrial to housing to who knows what. Really, as the economic development work went into this, it became much clearer that the best potential use for the Daniel Webster College site is a airport-affiliated small private college. That's the best use, were it actually financially viable, which it is not. So, given, given that major constraint, an attempt at moderate density, denser, but still in line with the surrounding context, it's still a good place for a meaningful new district neighborhood. And so, that's, you know, much more visible. The other big piece, which sort of came up a little bit later in the planning process, and that wasn't as discussed during the major public workshops, just because it happened a little bit later chronologically, was, excuse me, that's fine, was the Beazer site along the river. And so, there was a healthy discussion at, this really happened after the second large public workshop and during some of the different focus groups, that there was a lot of feedback from community members about how that could potentially happen, so much. So, we have information there about that one. And then, and then, as you can see, separate from the specific diagrams that I was calling out, the other big change that you've seen since the last draft is the surrounding context, not just the scenario itself, but that goals, actions, and recommendations that are associated with all of those have been filled out in, in more detail. One important piece, oh, you can see that, I'm sorry, this is an old PDF. Basically, so the way this is structured is there were the top goals, the large, you know, sections that were generally around these scenarios and other primary priorities for the city, but then after that, there are another, within each one of the goals, there's, this is maybe more salient for the planning board, a set of actions, which are the major components of a goal, and then within that, the recommendations that are sort of the, the meaty substance that actually make the thing happen, right? And so, if the first big one was redevelopment scenarios, the second big goal, right at the top, out of 10, number two, is about carbon-free transportation and building design. Right? This is TDEC, which we heard repeatedly from many different committee members in the public, that having a clear and coherent way to advance that forward in a progressive and time-sensitive way needs to be a top priority for the city. Great, right? That's a goal, but that doesn't actually say how to actually get the thing done, which is the point of the planning process. So, from there, more detail happens, right? And so, the top action becomes encouraging the accelerated adoption of electric vehicles. This is a really good example of a complicated action. Electric vehicles are the best way to transition, you know, private car usage from a heavily carbon-emitting activity to something which is fully public, or carbon-neutral, right? However, private vehicles are owned not by neither the city, or, you know, controlled in any way like that. And so, the framing of it was, it already alludes to some of the complication there, right? We are encouraging the accelerated adoption of electric vehicles, owned by, you know, the private, or the public at large, of the City of Nashua. So, within that, there's a large number of recommendations, which have themselves sub pieces, and my eyes are not moving, you know. So, paraphrase, since I can't see it offhand right now, I apologize that my eyes aren't as good as they should be, but the point is that, one of them is, you know, right off the bat, there's a lot of simple things the city can do, right? Have public awareness campaigns about the benefit to the purchases, the tax credits that are available at the state and federal level, you know, and processes like that to actually encourage the purchase. Then with that, there are still ancillary public things that the city is currently working on, but needs to do a lot more. A big piece of this is charging. And so, there's a large amount of detail about the full range of electric chargers, be they high voltage direct current ones, that, there's currently one right, right on the Massachusetts side, right at the, at the mall, but the city needs to work on getting more of these. And so, there's currently work being done by the energy manager in the city to put one fast charger at each one of the public garages. And so, that sort of process, along with transitioning the city white fleet to electrical vehicle, or electric vehicles, that's, that's the fullest of recommendations. What I was not seeing here, and I apologize for that on this PDF, is that the key remaining piece, which we are working through, is timeframe and partners. So, what is available on the draft currently is, we have filled out the timeframe, and in many ways, timeframes are a really, really important piece. And by timeframe, you're saying short, medium, or long. It's really, really important that both the planning board and the members of the public be aware that this document has to serve many different timeframes all at the same time. Knowing what all the different goals are over all the different timeframes is essential, but the short-term ones are the ones that are either easier or need to happen before other ones can happen. That said, you can't only do, you know, short master plans every five years and never have long-term goals, because if you don't have your eye on the prize, it's not all there. So, our hope is that across short, medium, and long, the full set of recommendations helps give context to all the different things that the city's working on right now. The other complicated piece is partners, and maybe another way to put this would be where the buck stops, and it's always gonna be here, but the question is where here is, right? It's overly simplistic to say that the planning department or planning board, I think, I hope you appreciate this, aren't gonna be the ultimate arbiters of making it all happen. So, we're, we need to make sure that everyone who we write down as a potential partner for these actions is okay with taking that responsibility. So, that's where we're still working a little bit. Let's go to, not at all. Okay. In addition to it just being a long list of goals and recommendations, it is worth knowing that this plan was not created in a vacuum. And by that, I mean, not only was this built on information from the public, but this relies very heavily on other planning projects that the city is actively and has recently been engaged in. Most notably, probably for the purposes of this plan, just before Imagine Nashua got started, a comprehensive, large housing study, I'm sure you're all very aware, was completed. And so, the point of this plan was not just to say yes to the housing study and regurgitate all of the information, but to try to read through a much larger document and find the biggest pieces that affect the city's city life. And so, what we've done is, first, we've prepared many of the key findings that sum up the biggest issues related to the general housing crisis in the City of Nashua, and then found which of those seem like the most salient goals or actionable things that the city's interested and able to do, you know, over the short and even long term. So, that's additional framing information, which goes around these goals and actions, even if it's not just about development scenarios. So, that, you know, leads itself from housing being an issue, to finding housing accessibility, to having these more detailed actions, many of which do, did come, in this case, very much from existing studies and plans. And, I can't get to the next page. Is this the last page?
It says this is the last.
All right, that's the last page. For reference for the public, just so I don't waste everyone's time going through a 200-page document, basically what happens for the rest of it is, after the 10 top goals, after these 10 top priorities for the city, there's a lot of additional stuff, and it's unfair to call it a grab bag, but there are also just other goals and concepts which you think are important. For example, after the top 10, one of the very first ones in that additional section is about the understanding of the need for densification. That's a complicated idea, because densification isn't the end unto itself, but it is a key strategy that, that, that planners have to, to, to affect change in different kinds of areas. And so, we felt that it was important to actually create a separate goal, just explaining the subtleties and importance of these different ideas, which has been referenced throughout later parts of the text. The other last piece I want to say before we take questions, is that at the end, I believe in the document, there's a glossary. I think we got them all right? There was one we weren't totally, we figured it out. Way to do some deep Googling into planning board meeting minutes, but eventually we figured out as many of them as we could, and so, hopefully that makes us feel like a little bit less an alphabet soup for, for members of the public who are trying to wade through all those small and complicated programs and abbreviations we have. What remains to be done between now and ideally when the planning board adopts this in a few weeks, is substantively, except for, you know, the partners and a little bit of, you know, a final approval from the city about the implementation matrix, is, at this point, substantively no more changes. At this point, it's really formatting and layout, there's, making sure that there aren't, you know, ambiguous references or parentheses, like we still need to fill in this paragraph. So, there's a little part, a couple of those made it through the last cut, unfortunately, we didn't catch quite every one of those. So, really, the document, as it's presented right now on the website, is 99.5% substantively complete, but we do still want to spit and polish before you all finally vote on the thing. And we got it, let's see. Half an hour, I hope that's okay. And then, with that, I think I'll take questions. And the way that I generally think maybe we can emcee it, is I can answer questions about the overall context of the project, or sort of the larger, you know, planning level components to the things, but as we get, if you all have anything that's more detailed about the scenarios, and especially if it ever touches where things get three-dimensional, even conceptually, I think that's where Tuskina is gonna be a much better and more articulate answerer than me. So, with that, I'm happy for getting questions from the planning board, or members of the public, I'm not sure what the process is here.
Okay, thanks. Matt?
I was just gonna offer a few comments to the board, and thank you to UTLT for their tremendous work on this project, Director Marshawn, Amber, and the, the Master Plan Steering Committee for their amazing work. Just a few brief comments for the board's consideration this evening. Will's absolutely correct, there are some details to be ironed out with the plan, but the request this evening to the board is to functionally, if you want to think about it this way, conditionally adopt this plan, and then send it off to the Board of Aldermen for their final approval, as well as part of the referral that was passed along in your packets. We will make the request this evening for adoption of the plan as presented, recognizing that some of those items will need to be resolved.
Apologies for the misstep, misstep in the procedural.
No, that's absolutely fine, but that is our ask this evening, and I just wanted to clarify that, recognizing we do have a 99.5% done plan, and there are no substantive changes proposed. I, I just want to emphasize quickly how important this document is.
That's a complicated idea, because densification isn't the end unto itself, but it is a key strategy that planners have to affect change in different kinds of areas. And so we felt that it was important to actually create a separate goal, just explaining the subtleties and importance of these different ideas, which has been referenced throughout later parts of the text. The other last piece I want to say before we take questions is that at the end, I believe in the document, there's a glossary. I think we got them all right. There was one we weren't totally, we figured it out. Way to do some deep Googling into planning board meeting minutes. But eventually, we figured out as many of them as we could. And so hopefully, that makes us feel like a little bit less an alphabet soup for members of the public who are trying to wade through all those small and complicated programs and abbreviations we have. What remains to be done between now and ideally when the planning board adopts this in a few weeks is substantively, except for, you know, the partners and a little bit of, you know, a final approval from the city about the implementation matrix, is, at this point, substantively no more changes. At this point, it's really formatting and layout. There's, making sure that there aren't, you know, ambiguous references or parentheses like we still need to fill in this paragraph. So there's a little part, a couple of those made it through the last cut, unfortunately. We didn't catch quite every one of those. So really, the document as it's presented right now on the website is 99 and 1/2% substantively complete, but we do still want to spit and polish before you all finally vote on the thing. And we got it. Let's see. Half an hour, I hope that's okay. And then with that, I think I'll take questions. And the way that I generally think maybe we can emcee it is, I can answer questions about the overall context of the project, or sort of the larger, you know, planning level components to the things. But as we get, if you all have anything that's more detailed about the scenarios, and especially if it ever touches where things get three-dimensional, even conceptually, I think that's where Tiskin is going to be a much better and more articulate answerer than me. So with that, I'm happy to get any questions from the planning board or members of the public, I'm not sure what the process is here.
Okay. Thanks. Matt?
I was just going to offer a few comments to the board, and thank you to the UTLT for their tremendous work on this project, Director Marshon, Amber, and the Master Plan Steering Committee for their amazing work. Just a few brief comments for the board's consideration this evening. Will's absolutely correct, there are some details to be ironed out with the plan. But the request this evening to the board is to functionally, if you want to think about it this way, conditionally adopt this plan and then send it off to the Board of Alderman for their final approval, as well as part of the referral that was passed along in your packets. We will make the request this evening for adoption of the plan as presented, recognizing that some of those items will need to be resolved.
Apologies for the misstep in the procedural.
No, that's absolutely fine, but that is our ask this evening, and I just wanted to clarify that, recognizing we do have a 99 and 1/2% done plan, and there are no substantive changes proposed. I just want to emphasize quickly how important this document is, especially as the planning board considers not only future development proposals, but also the update to the land use code and the comprehensive update to the land use code that will hopefully come in the coming year to two years. This is obviously the foundational or the keystone piece of that land use code update. And it goes beyond, again, just the development proposals that you're seeing during your regular review process of subdivisions and site plans. This will be the formative piece of rewriting the zoning ordinance and the regulations that you use to review those proposals on an everyday basis. I do think it's really great what Will said about using this to sort of open the book, although it might be a PDF document where it really comes down to it. We want to make this an everyday part of your review when it comes to the development proposals that do come in. We've had some conversations about utilities at times, referring back to the conversations happening with this master plan. We want this document to be opened on a regular basis, even beyond the update to that land use code, and I think that's important to keep in mind. I do want to say as well that we've done, I think, a really great job here on the implementation matrix side of things. Will mentioned the project partners, the timeframes, and the recommendations themselves. The 2000 plan was in place for, as we hear, 20 years. We obviously want this plan to be used on a more regular basis. I believe we'll be working to make this a more iterative process when it comes to reviewing the recommendations of the master plan and tracking our success, particularly in the context of those metrics that were mentioned. So we want this to be, and it's a cliche unfortunately these days, but we want this to be a much more sort of living, breathing document for the board to use and implement on a regular basis. Again, I just want to thank the board for their consideration of the plan this evening. I know the UTLT team is anxious to answer any questions that you might have, but really, I want to thank everyone, and hopefully this will be a great piece when it comes to updating our land use code over the next coming year. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Matt. Okay, at this point, I guess I'll take questions from the board for the consultant team or city staff. Mr. Ballinger?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. I just have a follow-up question, Matt, on the process. So understanding that we would be, we're being asked to adopt and recommend the plan tonight, and then it goes to the Board of Alderman, is it like the typical land use referral, or, so that when the Board of Alderman approves the master plan, that is final? Or is there another process step where it comes back to us after the Board of Alderman approves it? Just wanted to clarify that.
My understanding of the process, please correct me if I'm wrong here, but the way the process will work is that the adoption will happen here, the document will not return to you for a final step. The adoption tonight, again, is sort of a conditional adoption. Certainly, if there are substantial concerns, we can have a discussion about those, but it will not return to you prior to it being final. That's my understanding of the process.
Right. So like the typical land use referral we would get for the board?
Exactly, yeah.
Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Other questions for the board? Mr. Chair? Yeah, Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Matt actually sort of answered my first one, basically what statutory or revised ordinance are foreseen at this point. Obviously, that's going to be kind of an ongoing process, but there would obviously be changes associated with the document, so. Next question, I guess, is, has there been any sort of draft zoning map developed or foreseen at this point that corresponds to changes that are recommended? Are we still going to have, you know, R, A, B, C, 9, 18, things of that sort? Obviously, there's potential things that could affect, if not the actual zoning districts, but the overlay districts as well. And I didn't know how much foresight had been, but even if it's just a look ahead at this point, how the zoning map of the city may change.
So I'll take a first crack, and welcome back up here, but the answer is no. We have not yet drafted any kind of spatial adjustments to the zoning map as it exists today, but if you feel personally attached, we can certainly keep the zone names. No, I'm just kidding. But we, what this does is it allows us to identify, through particularly the piece that Will pulled up here, areas where there might be misalignment between the existing zoning and what the type of development we'd like to see might be, or areas where we anticipate types of development, and perhaps we'd like to institute some sort of protection there as well. So we're really trying to do that through this initial pass, but we have not had specific conversations about dimensions or where the zoning district boundaries might be drawn. We believe that this sort of development map will help us get us there, though. I will say internally, we've started having some conversations about sections of the code and processes that go through the zoning board where we really have recognized those misalignments between what the existing zoning is and what we're seeing. And so I think we're beginning to work towards just what you're talking about, Mr. Ballinger, but we're not there quite yet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is it okay if I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. There was one of the items which I think is yet to be determined, it's actually in the implementation report card, I think on page 27, at least the version I looked at, under the arts and culture section, income inequality. It was not clear to me how that term is defined, and how does the city develop a reportable metric, when I, I don't think that's mentioned at any other point in the document.
You need to finalize this?
But I guess, not to interrupt, if this is all invited the apple, I'm just trying to figure out how one of the metrics hasn't been defined yet.
Well taken. I would say that, you know, from the most quantitative cold look at it, there's like a Gini coefficient kind of look at income inequality, which is a measure of the difference between like a purely equalized income stratification, or one where there's a longer spectrum. I mean, the thing is, the complication with income inequality is, there is a healthy debate in the United States about what the right answer to differing incomes is. And so I suspect we're not going to have a perfect number for where it should be. But, Elise Kier wants to go and say.
Sure, go ahead, Sarah, you can respond too.
No, I think you're very well, but where this started from was actually the housing study, and we have some very good data about the income of the average white household in Nashua versus the income of an African-American household or a Hispanic household in Nashua, and Indian. Those were kind of the larger minority groups that we broke down. And the income inequality is very significant. And so what we, we have those numbers, and actually, I could probably bring them up if you would like, but essentially, the Indian households are by far the most, are a little bit ahead of white households in general in Nashua, but the Hispanic and African-American households are less than half of an average white household. And so what we were, what I was struggling with to trying to get them a metric, right, is to start from that point, but to understand what's, what is a reasonable goal in the 2030 timeline, right? So I can tell you that's the starting point, is what we know today with these different household incomes, and looking at how do we, what's a reasonable rate for a, by 2030 that would be corrected? And I was trying to scour kind of data and literature to find some reasonableness there, and I haven't quite gotten there yet. So that is the answer, and I don't know if income inequality is exactly the right term for that either, but that's what we were looking at.
Okay, no, I appreciate the, thank you for the response, but that is the term that's in there now. So again, without the, with the little TK note, I just didn't have a full understanding of what that represented, so, so thank you. Mr. Chair, I have just one more, if that's all right. I guess the last one, and I don't want to open up a can of worms, it's generally related to the recommendations for Main Street North. I just want to point out, if it's not already known, or if it's not already been investigated, Main Street from basically east on St. Paul Road to its intersection with Amherst Street, it's designated as a NHS, part of the National Highway System. It's a federal designation. I would encourage the city to coordinate with their state DOT partners. As an NHS facility, there are very prescriptive measures by which you can alter an NHS facility, and if there were previously, in the history of Main Street, any state or federal dollars which were used to construct, to reconstruct, or otherwise improve Main Street to its present five-lane cross-section for vehicular travel, I wouldn't want the city to be in a bad position where there's possible payback for right-of-way or for traffic signals that were installed 30 years ago. So I strongly encourage the city to pursue all possible venues with respect to history and NHS status on Main Street prior to making significant modifications. Mr. Chair, thank you for the time.
Thanks. Other questions by the board? Go ahead, Mr. Meehan.
Thank you. I was curious, it struck me, I mean, first of all, it was just beautifully comprehensive, but it was, it's an amazing document, I think, the breadth and the scale of the whole thing. So I really appreciate all the work you guys did on it. I was struck by how much was being redeveloped, reapportioned, and re, 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 and I was also struck by the idea of equity. And I wondered how you guys wrestle with that, you know? We know redevelopment often means pushing people out and bringing new people in, and how do you balance that out in this kind of land use and all this redevelopment effort making throughout the city?
I'm not going to perfectly enter this, so I'll give it, I'll give my best. The first thing I'll just note is you bring up a really good point, like, and it's worth saying this while we're talking about a master plan that does envision in the long term big change, which is that it is absolutely true, both in the past and happening now, that when you want to talk about a redevelopment process being good, you'll use words like revitalization, or redevelopment opportunity, or vibrant districts, and I'm sure vibrant appears in this plan more than once, right? That same thing can be described as displacement, gentrification, or, you know, other words like that. And they're, in many cases, talking about the same thing, or they can be talking about the same thing. So that tension bothers me every day as an urban planner. So I just want to say that, like, I, the authors of this document feel that very strongly. Now, that said, there's a couple pieces which I think mitigate this, we hope, and make this a responsible plan for the city of Nashua. First, the immediate corollary to your noting that large portions of the city are being re-envisioned in a fairly dramatic way, is that many of these changes will take an extremely long time to make happen. In many ways, the sort of, if I think about the core nugget of what the plan of this is, it's that, you know, and I mentioned this at the last steering committee meeting, that, you know, state zoning-enabling acts generally say that the power of the city to do things is when they are in accordance with the master plan, right? So you need a plan that talks about what the changes could potentially be. So we need a document through a community process that, well, maybe not to find a word on it, does have a mediated, long-term vision for how these redevelopments could happen. That's like step one of 30, right? And so this is that step one. Within that, when there's some agreement on what, in an ideal world where everything goes great, the outcome could be, it then becomes unfortunately to work, maybe it'll be a little bit less of us, since we won't necessarily be here, of everyone involved to correctly try to fight that fight on avoiding this being something purely about displacement. Part of that's what Sarah just mentioned about, you know, income equality. I mean, another way to put it would be wealth generation. There are many ways that much of this redevelopment, when done well, actually can do its best to provide further, and when done carefully and to try to minimize consequences, can benefit a lot of these issues as much as possible. In the United States, especially in Nashua, especially in New England, home ownership is the single biggest way that households develop, retain, and build generational wealth. So in that sense, redevelopment, as long as it's creating opportunities for home ownership in a more expanded way, is probably the single biggest lever anyone here, whether it's on the planning board, or any elected officials, or developers, or anyone else have to make this happen. And so with that in mind, doing it over the long term in a way that doesn't make the public realm worse, that doesn't let only fancier things exist necessarily, that, I think, can, can, when done well, be less about displacement and gentrification and more about expanding opportunities to Nashua at large.
Sarah?
Great endings. Yeah, so, well, so I get to talk about the on the ground, boots-on-the-ground, beginning of implementation here, and it is, we have been working since the housing study and this summer on financial feasibility analysis for inclusionary zoning to be looked at in the city. So essentially, we need to understand the finance of being able to develop and not, and understanding those costs, which are very substantial, to be able to realistically talk about inclusionary zoning, which is one of the many ways we're trying to balance this process, right? That study is available as in a draft form tomorrow, and will be presented to the Board of Alderman next Tuesday, which you're going to get an email about tomorrow, as it becomes public. And so I think there's a lot of things in here that point to tools that we want to use in the future. This is one of the potential tools, and one of many, right? And this isn't an easy problem, and it's, it took many, many years for us to get here. It's going to take many years for us to untangle this. But, so for example, looking at how we incentivize affordable housing, and where it is, where we're encouraging it, and where we maybe encourage it less in the city, and how that it comes to be might become through an inclusionary zoning ordinance. And so we're starting with the data, which understands the financial feasibility first, and then we'll be rolling into a conversation about inclusionary zone.
Okay. Mr. Meehan?
Very excited to see, I think that's terrific. I was talking to a friend today who has a law practice here in Manchester, and I was just reflecting as I was preparing for the meeting tonight, as I was looking at the plan online. One of her concerns and one of her thoughts had been about the impact of the rail potential further making Nashua a bedroom community to Boston, and really losing its own sense of being a city unto itself. As I was reading through the plan, I kept thinking about that, right? I mean, how much of this is about Nashua, how much of this is about the greater metro area of Boston? Did you guys wrestle with that? I'm just curious. Did you, it seems to be in here a little bit, but there's also a lot of assumptions being made just about almost inevitable where we're heading.
It was one of the very fir, it was in our very first conversation with the city during the proposal phase? I don't remember. It was either during the proposal phase or upon contract, was about the rail. And this plan assumes as an axiom that ultimately the commuter rail will come to Nashua and to capitalize on the benefits of that as much as possible. So that's the way the plan formally frames this. In a larger sense, I would say that regionally, the reason why we took that approach is, you're in a weird, it's not even necessarily a perfectly sweet spot, but it could be a sweet spot, right? Nashua will never be that close to North Station when you actually take it. Like, the people who are going to take the commuter rail into Boston have to be okay with that kind of a commute to do it, which there is absolutely an audience for. And so there is a degree to which that will be important for the city. And to the degree that that happens, that will allow Nashua in some form to draw upon the slightly insane economic engine that is the Camberville-Boston area, right? So it would be remiss of this plan not to see a piece of that. That said, this is not Newton, or Brookline, or whatever, where it truly is a bedroom community, because ultimately, it's not, it's not any of the things I showed, but somebody else, earlier in the plan, in one of the existing conditions, there are these two maps that you'll see, they're kind of in green, and they show two slightly different patterns. One is, and this is pre-commuter rail, this is current conditions, the distribution of where people who live in the city of Nashua where they work, and another map of people who work in the city of Nashua where they live. And they're really different. Right now, the, if you live in Nashua where you work, I mean, it's actually not rocket science, it tends to be along like 128, 3, and all the other major highway corridors with major employment centers around them. There's a fair chunk of it that's in core Boston, but it's not like everyone's currently, I mean, that would be terrible traffic, right? On the other hand, when you look at if you work in Nashua where you live, it's a clean gradient out from the city, right? There's a strong ability of, the ability to live in Nashua if you work here, but you don't have to. You can still live in the surrounding communities. I mean, of course, there's a strong line along Massachusetts because taxes are crazy. But as a fundamental principle, I would say, a better way to think about it is, when those two things can equalize out a little bit more, when the distribution of people going out to work, and people going in to live, or whatever, you know what I mean? going out to work, and people going in to live, or whatever, you know what I mean? When that gets a little bit more equalized, that should generally, I think, feel like it's less of a bedroom community and less a one-company town, but actually something which is built into the broader metro area. So I don't know if we said that explicitly in the plan, but I would say that's a different kind of metric that's hard to formalize. But like, ideally having those maps become a little bit more equalized is a broader planning idea that I think the city should be striving for. But we didn't write that in the, maybe we should, no, that would be changing it if we adopt it, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks. Are there questions by the board, for the consultant team, or the? Ms. Harper?
It's not really a question, just, well, first, I wanted to say, this is the first master plan that I've, you know, been part of the process and have, you know, seen it, the end result, and it's been really great. I mean, I think that the master plan is beautiful, and you've done a fantastic job. But I did want to say, when I had read it as a planning board member, I had kind of thought along the same lines, I think, that Mr. Ballinger had, that I was curi-, a little bit more curious about the actual zoning map and what that was going to look like. You know, primarily because we've had a lot of cases in the last year or two where, you know, questions had come up about some infill lots and this and that. So I would say that was, that's probably the only piece that I, I feel like I just have a little bit of questions about.
I really forgot to make a, I got so distracted by getting highfaluties about housing that I. I, I remember, about the relationship of this to the land use code. So this, unlike zoning, while it will be adopted, while it become, while if adopted, the point of a master plan is to generally be the guiding document to help the planning board make its decisions. That's fundamentally its purpose, right? In a legal perspective. It's not a binding code. The primary changes that most likely will come out of the recommendations in this master plan are going to be maybe some changes to the districts, I would say, to most likely line, to most carefully, or, in a most brass-tex way, probably line up with that map that you saw, so that there be either modified use zones or overlay districts to help effectuate some of those changes, and some tweaks to basically the dimensional standards and use tables. That's, I say that's it, but that's kind of it. Like, to actually see the changes in the master plan, really, what we're talking about is generally minimizing all of the friction that Matt was talking about from the current zoning to an ideal outcome. And so there's still some wrestling that you all, as the planning board, and the, you know, Board of Aldermen, and everyone has to do a little bit of soul searching to figure out, how much do you want to purely as of right, some of these visions, as workable? To basically tell the market, no, we as a full body are good with this, so go forth and make something like it happen. Of course, is, to what degree do you want to still add editorial judgment via special permit, or, you know, site clean review, or other kinds of pieces to it? That's not the job of the master plan to fully do. But, but zone shapes and dimensional standards with determinations about the level of, as of rightness, so to speak, that you want to put into it, that's what you need to do to make this happen. There's a separate piece to zoning code updates, which is, you know, having it live as a legal document as of 2021. I'm sure that, you know, you're, ultimately, a lawyer needs to write this, right? And so all the new case law that exists in the state, all the different things, to bring it up to date, to make it, you know, defensible from a city perspective, that whole piece of it needs to happen as the zoning code is updated. But that shouldn't generally affect this part of it. And so for your purposes, I would generally say, if you didn't look at any of the specific dimensional constraints, what this plan, and, you know, this map here, which generally shows the overall scenarios that you're looking at, and then these, you know, potential build-out outcomes are the raw material that whoever gets hired, or to what degree it's a combination of in-house versus consulting work on that next phase, this should be basically the first input given to that body, or that group, that team, to basically codify the thing. But really, like, when we work on this, the part that's the most exciting to see these kinds of things is like Appendix A and a couple different things on a map changing, which seems very, very small, but of course, the changes can be very, very big. The one last thing that I'll just say here, I think Sarah knows this, but I want to just make sure that everyone who will be involved in this process is aware, momentum is key to make this happen, right? The zoning code overhauls in cities can start and seem like, oh yeah, it'll just be things to line up with the master plan, but they get bogged down by increasingly more and more and more different initiatives. I would just encourage everyone here to consider the land use code changes needed to make this hap-, or to make, not that one, the, the master plan possible without needing to do the entire kitchen sink, simply because, simply having something which was recently gone, that recently went through a large public process, it'll, it'll simplify an update process. So that's just my two cents on, the best way that you'll get this done in the time we need is to start.
I think it's also not typical of comprehensive plans to go into detail in so many areas like we collaboratively did. So I think, like, that already gives us like a big step towards the next natural step of making a zoning map and changing zoning, because we have, like Will said, all the guidelines, very specific areas, and if you look at the recommendations, we are already starting to hit some of those dimensional requirements and what we think is required for all these areas. So, yeah, the next step is that you all have the second look and the second sort of reiterating process before making the zoning map.
Thank you.
Other questions by the board? Mr. Hirsch?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really impressed by the magnitude of the job you took on, I mean, it really is amazingly comprehensive. And my question is, what happens, for example, on the Amherst Street corridor, just to pick an example, where you recommend certain density situations, you know, certain, you're, I took, took a pretty large density to incentivize developers to do certain things. How do we go forward in the next couple of years with different projects? Are they, because we're really, the zoning in existence right now is just the opposite in a lot, in some ways, once permitted on that corridor. What, how does that all work together? I don't understand, I'm not, you know, that knowledgeable.
It's a really great question. So what we had talked about in the last committee meeting that was a great idea was, until the land use code is updated, right, and how we get into that, I'll talk about in a second, but maybe there's a piece in your staff memo that starts referring to this plan, even though it isn't the underlying law, but making sure that we're keeping the underlying public comment and discussions here, right, present in front to you guys as you're reviewing applications. And so making sure we're making, as staff, helping to make that connection to this document, because it does have a legal standing as the vision of the community, even if it isn't quite in ordinance yet. It isn't law, right? But it does have standing. And so I think that's piece one. What I would say is piece two is that we have the money, and we're going to be going out for RFP very shortly to rewrite the land use code. And the next step is to, first, we need to finish and get this adopted, and to figure out the structure of exactly that process, because this was an amazing process, but the next part is really hard, and it's all the details, right? That corridor and this vision could be, you could meet a lot of the goals in this in ten different ways, right? And so we need to be picking the ways that we're going to structure the code to best reflect what we think will get us to these goals, the myriad of goals quickest. And so that process is intensive, and it's going to have a lot of detailed discussion, and that process is going to outline, say, for Amherst Street, if we have these ideals and images, not this ideal, but, you know, if we come up with some ideals and images and basic forms, and the flexibility that will allow right in the code with that, or if there's less flexibility, for example, right now, we do the suitability analysis, right, which has a lot of flexibility for you to help decide if we still keep a form like that, or if we do something much more structured. Those kind of things will come with the land use code rewrite, and we should be starting that discussion, I would think, in the new year, to get that done quickly.
So, so basically, any project going forward then should be taking the land, this, you know, this master plan into account. So for example, redevelopment projects or whatever on Amherst Street, without, not getting involved with the New Hampshire DOT agency that'll allow us to do what you're talking about doing there. It just, my concern is that it's going to get kind of shut down for a while.
They, no, they absolutely should not. So the land use code that we have in the city is law, and that's what the development projects coming forward will be. But in many areas of the, the, Amherst Street, we already have the suitability analysis, and we can bring this in as something to think about, and something that you should use in your evaluation of what's going forward, but it's not law, and it's not saying you shall build this way. That's, that's not at all what would be the next step. If you had an application in January for a large redevelopment on Amherst Street, it wouldn't be, this isn't, this doesn't have setbacks, this isn't zoning, right? It's just an ide-, it's an idea that needs to be vetted into details. And so the large concepts, I think, would be relevant to your discussion, but the law that exists is the existing land use law. Does that help, or did I make it work?
The existing law will essentially govern.
Yes.
What this board is going to deal with.
Yes.
Going forward on site clean reviews.
The existing law.
Existing law.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
May I just one?
Please.
I just, the only thing I wanted to add is, as you're all aware, much of the development review process happens before these applications actually come to the board. Nearly all applications are, involve some internal meeting between planning staff, engineering staff, and as part of those, although strict conformity to the existing regulations is certainly a priority for the applicants, there is sort of a subjectivity and a conversation that happens about the proposal's viability in the eyes of the board beyond those regulations. And I think that will be the opportunity for us to take some of these concepts forward from the plan and say, these are the regulations, but this is something that we're striving for as a planning board moving forward. So although it may not have the regulatory force, we can certainly present it as something that will make the development more maybe attractive to the board as they go through the development review process. And believe it or not, that has a lot of weight for developers as they look at risk within their process. So I think there is another opportunity there, sort of as part of the pre-application process, if you will, or pre-submission process.
If I can add one more thing, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
Sure.
Jumping onto it, but, you know, in a purely mercenary way, time is money, right? And so it's the job of a developer, in, in the best way that your job is adversarial with developer, I mean, in a formal way, it's adversarial, right? You have to come to an agreement that's the right thing for the city, they propose something, you maybe can amend some piece of it, and you have the sway as the regulatory body around it, right? And so to the degree that a developer can be slightly more of a mind reader for the goal of the body of the planning board, that is a time-saving thing, right? And so to the degree that the planning board's decision-making process, deliberative process, within the subjectivity and discretion that's available from a regulatory perspective, as Matt is saying, to the degree that this, generally speaking, guides the advice that you all are giving to the developers in the approval process, every time that is more consistent with the new vision within the discretion that you have available to you, the more likely it is that the developer is going to try to emulate that in the first place. So even until the land use code is rewritten, this is a carrot, basically, this is a carrot for a developer to do the project more properly, because this is supposed to be what the city wants to be seeing in the first place.
Mr. Hirsch?
My concern is the, the lack of certainty, and I'm in a relative business, so my perspective coming into this, is a lack, it kills, it hurts land values, it hurts a whole lot of other things, because developers, at the end of the day, don't know really what, what you want, if it's this objective type of thing, because you're going in two different directions on this one.
You've got to pass that land use code.
Sorry?
No, I mean, that's, that's why the momentum is, that's why the momentum's key. At the moment, basically, as of when this gets formally, in three weeks, when this becomes the fully formally adopted, hundred percent, everyone who cares, you know, master plan, that's signal number one to the market, that we as a city are pretty good with this idea, but there's still some uncertainty. I don't think that it'll totally kill things, I think it will actually lead to a renewed interest, that's generally what happens, because the city's done a lot of thinking about what it wants to see, and in many cases, there should be profit to be made for the developer, right? So that's, that's piece number one. But that's why it's essential that the planning department go forward, issue that RFP, and begin that other thing, because that's further evidence that not only is that something the city is generally on board with, but that there's a follow-through to actually make that not so uncertain. So I think as long as that process begins happening soon, even if it's not completed, that, that's as good as you can do, and that's the role of a poligati for this. In, in, in all the other cities so far, where we've done statewide plans and there have been rezoning efforts, simply saying, here's our master plan, we are actively rezoning it to match that, you should start planning for things accordingly, that's music. That is, that's saying, we want you to do this thing, here's how to do it, just do the thing, and we're here to support you. That's, that's as good as it gets from a regulatory perspective, I think, short of it getting passed.
Yeah, right. But I just. We meet with people on a regular basis about the potential redevelopment on Amherst Street, and we've been talking to them for a long time about the DOT widening and that plan, and that uncertainty, you're right, hasn't changed, and it won't necessarily change with this. But what I do think is that we talk to people on a regular basis about the ideals we've heard from the community about the last year, and we are still actively seeing people coming in and excited about the prospect for the redevelopment of Amherst Street. And I do think it's more the concept that they're excited about, and that there isn't a physical line to meet yet. Gives us a lot of flexibility and a, and a lot to work with in encouraging redevelopment of Amherst Street. Until such time, we have a new code, which we don't, which, you know, best-case scenario is a year from now, and that would be aggressive.
I would also just quickly add that we have had several development meetings where, to my surprise, the development community sort of generally has brought out a concept from the draft of this plan as part of the discussion on their end proactively. So there's no question that there is a level of the development community paying attention to what's being recommended as part of this plan. While we may not be seeing those executed through the development review process, they're starting to think about it, and I think that's really the first very positive step when it comes to implementing this, before we can get that code into place.
Thank you. Yeah, one comment I was going to make was, you know, having been on the board for a long time, I mean, and this is maybe something to think about, Larry, is the current land use code, you know, isn't very reflective of the existing master plan, right? So the existing master plan's like twenty-something years old, and the current land use code has been modified, I don't know, a hundred times, you know, or more, since that plan was developed. So my thought is, this clarifies more than it confuses, because the confusion is high right now with the fact that we have an old plan and a, a, you know, continuously improved or changed code for twenty years. So, so right now, I think we're kind of in the mode of trying to make the most of two, you know, things that aren't in very good alignment anyway. It's, it's pretty highly likely that the new plan and the existing codes are probably closer together than the old plan and the existing codes, you know, so, to some extent, so, that's my thought.
And one quick question, so basically, we'll be, we'll be throwing out the entire zoning code, the map, everything? Is that what's going to happen with the new rewrite?
I would describe it as a comprehensive review, but certainly not a comprehensive rewrite of everything that exists in that code. I would say that we have a few priority areas that have been identified, both through this process and other misalignments that we're seeing, that we will target through that land use code review. We're not going to throw the entire code out. That's certainly not the objective. I was going to say that I think this plan, this master plan, doesn't identify any crisis in identity in any of these areas, it identifies areas where we need to be proactive, and potentially a few that we need to be reactive in. I, I don't look at this as some diagnosis of emergency as far as where we have misalignment between the code and our plan, it's just about being proactive. I, I guess that would, that's all I would say to that end.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, particularly, as Sarah is saying, the residential neighborhoods, some of our more rural areas, those of lower density, we don't expect large change in the code, the dimensional standards for those areas. It's really, again, in these, many of these redevelopment opportunity areas that we expect to see some change. We've had several conversations about some of the flexibility that exists in our downtown districts, and some of the mixed-use and TOD, or transit-oriented development zones. I think we want to look at that process, whether we need to tighten some of that up now that we're seeing increased development happen there. So it's not going to be an entire rewrite.
Other questions by the board? Comments? Okay. I guess at this point, I'll open up to the public. Is anybody in the audience wishing to make a comment or ask a question of the presentation? If so, you can unmute your mic, state your name and address for the record, and go ahead and give your comment. I see one hand up.
Yep, it's Bob.
Yeah.
Hi, Bob, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Bob Keating from Five Corbin Woods. My, my name says Galaxy J, J3B, but it's Bob Keating, so, to be clear on that. Just a general comment. I have deeply appreciated this process in terms of getting as much input as, as possible. I think it's all the more difficult in, obviously in this time of pandemic, and also the time of a newspaper that is published essentially once a week. So there isn't multiple opportunities to get this word out. I think the, the Office of Community Development has worked tirelessly to, to do it. In fact, and part of the reason I'm here tonight is the director was at a meeting that she had been repeatedly at one of the groups I belong to, to solicit input and to, to let people know what was going on. So I, I, I think that the department itself, and clearly the consulting group themselves worked very, very hard on this in a more challenging time than I think that we've ever had, or at least in, in my, my lifetime here as a, as a resident in, in Ashworth. So that, that's, that's the first and foremost that, you know, I want to say, and I will come back to that in my, in my last remarks too, but it permeates everything. And you said that, one brief area that I wanted to note, and this was an opportunity that the, the department and the consulting group offered these, you know, multiple focus groups and large group meetings to, to give input, is about Daniel Webster College. I, I agree that if it could stay a college, but that's, you know, beyond the control of anyone here in the, you know, in the city. Still hope that that was it. But I, I want to highlight it, it doesn't so show up in that description, but I, I think it is an incredible gem. And I, I won't reiterate what I've said and others have said about it. So I, I would hate to see that be lost. I, I think it has many other opportunities. So, so that's the comment about that. In terms of the, the housing, and I, I could speak about so many areas, but I'm just going to concentrate on, on that. I, I would say that I appreciate multiple things that were, were placed in there. I think when it comes to numbers, quite frankly, I, I think it's a difficult thing, especially we're only talking about six years, but that the idea that we wanted to decrease the amount of housing burden from, which means more than thirty percent of your income going for, for a house for rentals, from forty-one to thirty-eight percent in six years, I don't know how cheever, how that figure comes up, but it, to me, when we're speaking about two out of every five families that are renting, and it certainly would be higher the, the lower their income, then the more burden. And I, I think that that is, is something that would be good to highlight in a, in a more robust goal, that would be my, my thought. Similar when it speaks about for housing ownership, to change it from twenty-six percent to twenty-two percent of families are burdened. Like, I don't feel that as strong as the, the rental, because it's somebody owns a home, but I, I think that maybe it's something to look at in terms of the matrix. One other thing on the, the Housing Trust is glad to see that, and the Community Development has been in forefront of this. We have established a Housing Trust. In fact, I would have been at another meeting tonight, put on by the Economic Development Office. My wife was on, on that one, in which we're looking at the American Rescue Plan monies, the sixteen million dollars. But I do think that in this plan, it would be better that we said something about how it was going to be funded, because Housing Trust without a robust way of continuing to sustain it is not of, you know, a great deal of, of value in and of itself. So I do think that that would be benefited from some particular targeted numbers on that. And the final thing, and this, again, I deeply appreciate that being, this being put in there about income inequality. I think most of us, at least at some level, know that that is one of the most challenging issues of our times in terms of discrepancy between the richest in our country and those of more limited income. And that is so important, both for those who are, have the lowest income, but it affects all of us. And what I mean by this, and I, I will try to end next minute or so, is there's this two books by Wilkinson and Pickett, Pickett and Wilkinson, who are epidemiologists and from England, they've, they wrote extensively about this issue. And just they, from the back of one of their books, in, that in almost every measure of, my, my light is, is poor right now because the battery was running down, by almost every measure of, of well-being, from life expectancy to mental illness, violence, and literacy is affected by how, not by how wealthy a society is, but by how unequal it is. These are very powerful writings, and there's lots of, lots of support of this. So specifically, I, I think, although it's difficult to come up with a matrix, I think what was already in the report is the discrepancy between some racial groups, white households, and Hispanic and African-American families. That might be a start. I think putting out a, a target on this would be a, a significant improvement in that it gives us something that we're looking at, it makes it very, very explicit. And once again, I appreciate that being in there very deeply, and I appreciate all of the work that has been put into this. So that's my, my comments. Thank you for the time.
All right, thank you. Anybody else in the audience wishing to make a comment or ask a question? Nobody on?
No, Mr. Chair, for the record, I received no written comments in advance of the meeting either.
Okay, thanks. All right, I guess at this point, I'd ask the board, does there anybody have any further comments? Okay. I guess just procedurally, we would close the hearing on this and make a meeting? Same?
Close the hearing and then proceed with discussion and motion. I'm happy to recommend a motion, whether in the public hearing or after.
Okay.
If you're comfortable with.
Yeah, we can do it after. So, okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing on the Imagine Nashua Master Plan, move to our sort of meeting on it. So, anyway, just a couple of comments from myself. I, you know, obviously haven't been involved with the plan quite a bit since the beginning of it. I think the, you know, the overall product, as many of you have talked about, is, is, is well-done and pretty comprehensive. And, you know, I was excited to see the amount of engagement that we did get, which was great. So, from the, from the broader public as a whole, too, which is really good. So I'm definitely in favor of a positive referral and adoption of what's in front of us, but I'm, you know, anxious to hear what anybody else has to say as well. Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So like, like Scott, I've been on the board for quite a while. And, and almost from, since the, you know, the, when I first started on the board, there's been talk about updating the master plan. So I think this, this step that we're taking or proposing to take tonight is, is, is long overdue. And, you know, I, I think it's, it's important, both because of the need to have the master plan reflect what the, what the current goals of the city are. And as, as we talked about, you know, during the steering committee process, really the goal here is that this master plan continues to live so that, you know, in, you know, ten years from now, when we're going through this process again, we're not starting from scratch, but rather we're building on the plan that's been written here. And I think, you know, I echo what Scott said, I mean, obviously, this is, I think, you know, the util team, staff have done an incredible job in terms of developing this document. And, you know, I think in addition to, to, you know, to getting to this stage, you know, one of the things that I found in my time on the planning board is that there are references to the master plan in various places, and, and we talk about it sort of, you know, as an ancillary part of a lot of the plan's review. But I've never felt like we really have a good sense of how the master plan should inform what we're doing on the board. And I think this plan provides a really great opportunity to be able to change that going forward. And as Matt said, I think the idea that we are looking at this regularly, and Larry, your point about, you know, what does it inform both before and then, and then hopefully after, you know, the zoning changes and land use code changes have been implemented, how does it inform what we're doing on the board? And I think this plan really lends itself to that process. So I would just, as Scott said, I, I'm, you know, happy to have been able to participate in this process. I really strongly support the plan, and, and I would certainly, you know, be in favor of and, and plan to, to vote for a favorable recommendation tonight.
Other? Mr. Meehan?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, so I was thinking about this, our, our last meeting where we had the huge proposal, and as a new board member, right now, as someone who hasn't experienced it. And I was thinking about Michael's, one of his comments is about what else could be there. And we didn't have, we didn't have anything to refer to that I knew of, that would be kind of what would be ideal for this location as opposed to just, this is what's in front of us, does it fit the law, if it does, we approve it. So if we pass this, if we adopt it, we own it. Is that true? I mean, we, this is something that's going to be in our permanent file folders here that appear on our desk. And when a developer brings X, Y, and Z to us, we're going to be flipping through this thing, looking to see, does it fit?
Yeah, and that's accurate. And if you, you know, just, just as a basic review, you know, I mean, our, we all have our blue cards, if you will. You know, the, the site plan approval criteria, I mean, criteria number one is, you know, is consistent with the goals, objectives, and strategies adopted in the city's master plan. So on all of our cards, that is, it is actually, I mean, we have other criteria, obviously, but that is one criteria. So, yeah, you're right.
And just to add to that, I mean, one of the things we talked about in the steering committee process was, you know, potentially having something in addition to the full master plan, you know, that would be, you know, a, a sort of, a narrower document that would help, you know, direct the planning board, you know, because obviously, you know, it's, it's different from flipping through this entire document. I mean, hopefully what will happen is that the planning board members will be familiar with the entire master plan. But then I think to the extent that we can sort of build a separate document that's, that's more focused in terms of specific goals, you know, that's, that's sort of what I would hope we would end up with.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and as staff mentioned before, we had talked to them about, you know, essentially them reviewing this against the applications and providing some feedback to us in the staff report about the consistency and, or lack thereof, and, you know, and that kind of thing, which, which is, you know, that could be helpful as well.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions in the meeting here? Okay, hearing done. Somebody want to make a motion? And I would remind people, the motion, how we do with, with these types of motions, it's, it's a motion for a, you know, whether it's a favorable or unfavorable recommendation. But I think, Matt, did you want to be specific about, because we, there is an adoption component here.
There is, and I, I will quickly refer to the referral that you received within your packet. One of the oddities, if you will, of this referral is that it really hinges upon the planning board actually making a motion to adopt. So what I'd like to recommend is a two-part motion, reading loosely as follows, and that is a motion to adopt the 2020 month, 2021 Imagine Nashua Master Plan and recommend R21-170 to the Board of Aldermen for approval. And that sort of checks both of the boxes, being the adoption and actually recommending the piece of legislation to the board.
Okay, thanks.
I'm happy to read that again if there's a motion maker.
I don't think it's open. Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would make a motion that the planning board adopt the Imagine Nashua 2021 Master Plan, and that additionally the board offer a favorable recommendation with respect to Resolution R-21-170 relative to the approval of the Imagine Nashua 2021 Master Plan.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Varley to adopt and to provide a favorable recommendation to the Alderman on this particular resolution. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, do we, we don't need a roll?
You do not need a roll call.
Okay.
Exciting.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes.
Okay.
All right. Thanks a lot. Appreciate all your help on everything. I think we have one more item on the agenda, right?
We do, we do.
Who, who, does somebody to present that, or?
Mr. Engineer Hudson, I believe, will handle this, as I'm concerned, yes.
This is a referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed R21-169, authorizing the city Nashua to enter in an agreement and consent to joint use of Liberty Utilities and make a supplemental appropriation of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is, off the end of Swart Terrace, the city has an easement, a drainage and sewer easement, which takes stormwater and sewage, you know, down to, towards, to the east of the railroad. This proposal is to allow, to enter in an agreement with Liberty Utilities, to allow them to cohabitate a portion of our easement. Where the easement comes to Swart Arrow, it narrows, and so there's not a ample room for them to, to come, come to, to a different place. This will allow them to install high-pressure gas main into the area to better service the area. As part of this agreement, given the proximity to the city's drainage pipe, we've asked for a contribution so we can line that pipe, which will buy us additional life and alleviate any concerns with any conflicts with the proposed gas main. So that's in a, in a nutshell, and if there's any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Okay, thanks a lot. Mr. Varley?
Just a quick question. So is, is it says making a supplemental appropriation. So is it, is the thirty-eight, three ninety-four, that's essentially, that's coming from Liberty Utilities, and then that's being appropriated for the purpose you just described?
That's correct. We're, we're doing a lot of pipelining of sewers and drainage as part of our public works, operations. What this will be is we'll, we'll take their contribution and What this will be is we'll take their contribution, and that number actually comes from a contract that we have with a pipeline company for the given pipe size and length. So it's a direct takeoff of that, and that's what it's intended to be used for.
Thank you.
Other questions by the board? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Again, this would just be for either a favorable or unfavorable recommendation. Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion with regard to a favorable recommendation with respect to Resolution R dash 21 dash 169, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into an agreement and consent to joint use with Liberty Utilities and making a supplemental appropriation of thirty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Okay, so we have that motion for the favorable recommendation by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. All right, I think that's it for our agenda, unless there's any discussion topics?
One exclamation point, as the director mentioned, we will have a presentation next Tuesday evening on the lovely Inclusionary Zone and Financial Feasibility Analysis through the Board of Aldermen. I'll send you a link to that meeting, as well as a draft, as well as a draft of the study for you to review. Please don't look at it over the weekend unless you really want to, but please do feel free to tune into that presentation next week. I think you'll find it incredibly interesting, a really nice offshoot of the master planning effort in the form of implementation. So I'll send it off to you tomorrow, but hopefully we see you next week. Thank you.
The only other thing I had to say is, I did get an email from Scott with some information on the historic district commission representation. I think on our agenda for next meeting, we're looking for someone on this board as a, ever to be a representative on that. So I will email that around to the board so that you all have sort of the information of what it's about and what it is, and I would encourage everybody to think about participation and whether you're interested, and, I guess the process, if you are interested, you can, there's no reason they can't email the board on that, right?
Sure.
Yeah, you can email back to my email saying you're interested or not at all, if you want, so everybody knows who might be interested, they might speed it up on the other end. We're taking motions or votes, so. All right, that's all I have. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Anybody?
Mr. Meehan? So moved?
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn. We don't need a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? We are adjourned. It's like about nine.